All right, we're gonna go ahead and come out of closed meeting. You have a motion to come out of closed session?
One more.
All right, I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Pellum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
He on here.
He's on. Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, certification please.
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D for only public business matters one lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and two identified in closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pellum?
Yeah.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Kelly Pratt to the Architecture Review Board, Robert Sargent to the Board of Building Code and Fire Prevention Code Appeals, and Matthew Mellon to the DOT Commission?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Counselor Denton and seconded by Counselor Pellum. Is there any discussion?
I lose the end of session for that part, so I'm not gonna vote for those appointments.
Okay. Seeing no other lights, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Gore, you said you were gonna abstain from this motion?
Yeah, exactly. I wasn't back there that time.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pellum?
Yeah.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to our work sessions tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. We have two work session items this evening. Conditional use permit request. The first one is a conditional use permit request for a single family dwelling on a nonconforming lot in the R1A district. This is parcel 1230055. Also known as 3104 St. Charles.
Mr. Ward, can you talk a little bit louder?
Sure. Is that better? So again, this is, this is a request to construct a single family dwelling on a nonconforming lot. The applicant is MMS Rental Group LLC. This particular property is located in Ward Five, zoned R1A residential low density, and all the notifications that we are required to do by state law were undertaken. Here's some quick maps, just the general location on the left and then the specific location on the right. The map on the right actually, it's an aerial, shows an existing house there. That house, that's a, it's an old aerial. That house burned down. So this currently is a vacant lot without a structure on it. In the R1A, the minimum lot size is 75 feet wide and 10,000 square feet for single family dwelling. This particular parcel is only 60 feet wide and a total of 8,700 square feet. Therefore, the nonconformity is, is in the width and in the total lot size. Here's some images of the house that's being proposed to be constructed at this property. On the left is a front and side, right side elevation with a floor plan. It's a one-story, single-family dwelling, three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,318 square feet. Again, some additional images of elevations. These are the seven CUP approval criteria that we as staff go through to, on these individual applications. I won't go through these individually because you're all are quite aware of them, but in staff's opinion, this application meets all the criteria necessary for approval of a CUP, and it's also in conformance with the comprehensive plan. In this particular application, the architectural style of the proposed dwelling will enhance the neighborhood of, again, primarily vernacular design homes that are already there. The average size of dwellings in the area is 1,353 square feet. This particular property is a little bit smaller, but it is significantly larger than the dwelling that was there before. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request with the following conditions. This new structure will have, will have 12-inch minimum eaves along all roof edges. The lot will have a minimum coverage of 20% tree canopy. A driveway will be installed in accordance with the city's driveway policy, and staff was, depending on the location of the driveway, was providing two options. When this went to public hearing at Planning Commission, we did not receive any written or spoken comment, but Planning Commission agreed with those conditions except for on the third one. They modified it to say that a driveway of asphalt or concrete will be installed regardless of where it was going to be. That's it on this particular presentation. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Ward?
I can't tell from the map, is the driveway gonna be in the yard or is it gonna be on the side?
It will likely be a rear access driveway off the alley. It's a pretty narrow lot.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, is it gonna be in the front yard?
We'll, we'll take care of that when a building permit is submitted. We require a, a lot plan that will indicate where the driveway's going.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to request that the city manager look into ways that we can implement a process to make sure that when these lots come up for sale, that all delinquent taxes, expenses, liens have been taken care of, that the city has been reimbursed. There, it's a process, and I'm not sure from trying to follow it myself, I had a great deal of difficulty. And I would like to have the city manager kinda go over this so that we know.
Don't y'all do that?
I was gonna ask you, Mr. Ward, is there a process in place already? Or can the process be refined?
So, this particular property was a spotlight property at one point. It was on the spotlight list, and came before council, and the abatement plan was to demolish and remove, which the city did. The city actually incurred the cost for that, and it was properly attached as a lien to the property. There is a process for that, so the current process is if the city incurs a cost, whether it's a demolition cost, or even grass cutting, or trash and debris removal, the owner is notified of that and has 30 days to pay. These invoices are sent up to the treasurer's office, and if the invoice is not paid within 30 days, the treasurer's office is supposed to transfer it to the city clerk's, excuse me, the city attorney's office, where a lien will be drawn up and then handed over to the court, where the court actually attaches it to the property. That's the current process.
Process, but was it done?
Yes, in this case, it was done.
And they paid?
So, the applicant for this property is not the owner of this property?
I know that, I understand, but...
Correct. So, the actual sale of the property has not occurred? So typically, at the sale of a property is when liens and back taxes and all that are settled through the closing process.
Why don't, why don't we approve that when all that happens? So make sure we get our money?
Well, the applicant has a contract to purchase this property, and it's contingent, the sale of the property is contingent upon the approval of the CUP, which makes perfect sense. The property really doesn't have much value if you can't build a house on it.
Who's gonna follow up to make sure the money's reimbursed to the city?
The liens are properly attached, so I would think any closing attorney or any title search is gonna reveal these liens. The applicant are, they're fully aware of these liens that are on the property.
And they know they have to take care of them?
I would hope so. If they're in the real estate business, they, they need to know that.
That's why I wanna study, I wanna make sure that we are...
We have a process, yeah, I don't think we have a process.
I don't think we do. I just wanna be sure that we are following step by step to make sure the city is getting back these funds from taxes, from cutting the grass, from liens that are against the property. There could be quite a few, and they, we have noticed they've been getting lost in I guess the path of going around through all the departments. And we wanna make sure that the city is going to be reimbursed.
Well, it's, well, it's like to me, we just need to make sure the treasurer, you can confirm with the treasurer whether the lien is there, right?
My staff actually confirmed with the courthouse that the liens were in place.
Okay. Once that's done, it's just a matter of paying it.
I would suggest if you're trying to seek confirmation of a lien being placed on a property, start with the city attorney's office, because that's the last step at the city before it goes to the, to the court. So the treasurer's office may not know.
Okay.
If, if they've passed it on to the city attorney's office, they, they may not know when that lien actually gets handed over to the court.
Is that about right, Mr. Attorney? Madam Attorney?
I'm, I'm not sure, but I can check to see what the process actually is. I thought it was working, had been working fairly efficiently.
I signed ten of them today.
Okay, you said you signed ten today?
Yes.
Okay, so, my understanding that the process is working quite efficiently, but I'll see where the, see if we can discover where the breakdown is.
It's typically the city paralegal who's drafting these liens.
Yeah, who drafts the lien, yes.
Yeah, I will just say, when I went back to check on this, and to try to find a trail, a paper trail going from one department to another, I'm not sure right now what is really owed on that property. We, we don't know. I'll help you. I mean, I'll meet with you and tell you what I'm finding out as I go to it. I will tell you today, I went to the courts, I went to the assessor's office, I went to the attorney's office, I've been everywhere trying to find this trail.
Okay. So you guys understand the request? Okay. Okay. Moving on to work session number two.
Okay, our second work session this evening is also a conditional use permit request. It's to allow single-family dwelling use in the B4 district as it relates to parcel 0891060, also identified as 3421 Oaklawn Boulevard. The applicant for this property is Rivers City Ventures LLC. The property itself is located in Ward Seven, and again, zoned B4. In the B4, single-family dwelling use is allowed with the approval of a conditional use permit application. And again, all public notice was undertaken. I do wanna say this picture here does not do this property justice. This is an older picture. This property has been fully rehabbed. Here are some maps, on the left generally, general location, and then on the right, an aerial view. You can see the house fronting Oaklawn Boulevard. It has a detached garage in the rear, accessible from the side street. Again, as, as is typical with these structures along Oaklawn Boulevard, this property was originally constructed for and always has been used as a single-family dwelling. This particular property has been vacant for more than two years, which is what has triggered the application for the CUP. In staff's opinion, the property did have some minor negative impacts on the neighborhood, and that was essentially that a, that a proper driveway did not exist, and looking at historical photos of this property, vehicles are often parked in the grass, which goes against city Here's a picture again on the left of the structure in another aerial view, which is a little bit better than earlier in the presentation. So again, these are the seven questions for CUP. I will not go through those either, but in staff's opinion, the application does meet the requirements for the conditional use permit and is also compliant with the comprehensive plan. So staff recommends approval of this particular CUP with the following two conditions. One, the applicant will complete an administrative re-subdivision just to combine the lots. Currently, this parcel is made up of three lots, and to combine them all into one. The applicant has already undertaken that process, and we anticipate receiving the administrative re-subdivision probably in the next couple of days. Number two, the applicant will improve the existing overgrown gravel driveway in the rear yard with a new top dressing of gravel. Again, at the public hearing at Planning Commission, no written or spoken comment was received, and Planning Commission agreed with the two conditions proposed by staff. Available for any questions? And there's a representative here this evening for the applicant if you have questions for the applicant.
Are there any questions? Seeing no lights? Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move into our regular meeting. Have a roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Here.
Counselor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Pellum?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, or excuse me, the prayer. Is evangelist right here this evening? No? Okay. I'll do the opening prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Pellum. Please rise.
Mayor Parton?
Administrator?
Yeah, Minister.
Parton?
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't even see you, Pastor Collier. Please do the honors.
No, right, that's good. First of all, I want to say thank you on behalf of the City of Refuge for you, your folks' continual support and helping us to help those in a crisis, and it's really appreciate it, appreciate it, and just wanna take this moment to say thank, thank you to each one of you. Let's power heads. Father in heaven, we approach your throne, and we give thanks, first of all, for this day that you have given us, Lord. Every day that you, Lord, allow us to, Lord, to be a part of something building community, Lord, we give thanks, and we offer our praise to you this day. Father, I pray that as this council deliberates this evening, Lord, that you would give wisdom and guidance and direction. For Father, you give wisdom far beyond our own abilities and our own understanding. Give them strength, Lord, to make those difficult decisions, and, Lord, bring unity to this room and to our city as we endeavor to help those that are searching for help, Lord. We're endeavoring to work together for the common good. Bless us, strengthen us, guide us all according to your purposes, and lead us, Lord, even at times when we do not understand. And God, we give thanks for your wisdom and your strength, and we pray, Lord, continue to guide us in the days and the weeks and the months ahead. And we ask these things in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Change. Place. Move the flag.
Moving flags and everything. All right. Moving on, do I have a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pellum?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please. I think made by Counselor Denton, seconded by Counselor Pellum.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pellum?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Counselor Holloway? Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, moving on to information and presentations. Our first one, Mr. Hartless.
Good evening, everyone. What we're gonna be presenting on for this first presentation is the Safe Streets for All project that the city currently has going on, which is a federally funded project. With me tonight here is Larry Marcus, who is the representative from Los Montgomery, who's gonna go through the presentation.
Safe streets.
Hey, Marshall, good evening.
Evening, man.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to be here and give you an overview of the Safe Streets for All program. So, first slide, please. Yeah, as you're probably aware, the city was awarded a federal grant to do this work, and first thing that we did is work with your, your leadership teams, who have representatives from, senior representatives from several departments relevant for this, for this effort, including police, of course, ginger, from public information, obviously, very important, engineering, Marshall's leading it from the engineering staff, and working with several others to make sure that we get a broad perspective. As we look at safety on the streets, it's, within the Safe Streets for All program, it's not just an engineering exercise, it's somewhat of an all-in, communication, outreach, listening, enforcement, impeachment, et cetera, which, which I'll go through. Makes sense? Yeah, and so what we'd like to do today is just give you a quick overview of the program and then come back to you with the results. But as we start the public outreach aspect of this, we just wanted to be sure that you're aware of what's going on and where we'll be doing that outreach, as well as the type of work we'll be doing over the next few months. Okay? Next slide, please. So, just a quick overview of the difference of the new approach to safe streets from a federal government perspective, from a progressive city perspective, and comparing, as you can see in the graphic, from a traditional approach to this, this new approach, which is really looking at several factors. Really starting with the traditional side of preventing crashes in general, to a real focus on crashes that have severe injuries and fatalities, and really zooming in on those. Next, as you can see, the traditional approach being improving behavior versus designing streets and operating streets, understanding that people make mistakes and people aren't perfect, and to have that, that flexibility in, in the design. Speeding, obviously, is a very important thing, and understanding where that happens, the traditional side is, is really controlling it. As you can see here, it's, it's really focusing and reducing the speeds, particularly where there are vulnerable travelers, people walking, biking, et cetera, high-crash locations involving vehicles. Next, also, a very different perspective, looking at, hey, who caused that crash? How did this happen? To a shared responsibility in, in that, which, which I'll get into more in the future, but just looking at it from how, how can we minimize, minimize the occurrence of this happening? And then finally, traditionally, it's a, we have crash history, we're gonna analyze the results, and we're gonna address where we've had problems, to much more of a proactively, certainly looking at crash history, but now looking forward to and saying, where do we have high-risk locations? And in our approach, starting with the safe streets approach, but really our approach with, with your city leadership is, is what are, what did the residents see? What, what do people that are out on the streets, what do the police see, and that they could feed to us? And compare that with the data and come together as, as to how do we look at what's been happening, and what do people see as high risks, and then start to put a plan together. So that's, that's a quick overview of the differences of traditionally meaning for decades versus this, this newer approach, which, which if you've heard of the phrase Vision Zero, it's, it's same philosophy as those cities that have embraced internationally a Vision Zero program, which means eliminate severe injuries and fatalities. Next slide, please. Yeah, and this also comes from the Safe Streets program. I won't read every word to you, just, just going through, it's, it's looking at their principles and how it compares to that traditional versus, versus the new approach. And, so again, with, with the, with the philosophy that, that deaths and serious injuries are absolutely unacceptable, particularly if they involve vulnerable travelers, and really start to think of places like school zones as, as rising to the top of, of concern. That humans make mistakes, as, as was referenced earlier. Humans are vulnerable, particularly based on the type of mode of travel, some very, much more than others. We touched on the responsibility being shared, the proactiveness now, looking at it that way. And then last principle was not discussed earlier, and that's the redundancy is critical. And what that is, is looking at a, a transportation network. So that's really how we, as, through this process, should be working with your planning group as well, and looking at what streets are being planned, and not just for one mode of transportation, but for all modes, and to have that redundancy. If there is a problem with one, you have the parallel street, you're giving folks options in path, you're giving folks options in mode, mode to choose. And with all that said, you have that mobility, you have the accessibility, but most importantly, you have the safety in that network. Good? All right, next slide, please. Yeah, a quick overview of the study process that we're engaged in now starts with, with understanding the latest, your latest comprehensive planning goals, and looking at those and saying, within those, you have transportation goals, right, which certainly connect closely to land use, in that this becomes a subset of that and, and approach on the safety aspect of that. So, so hopefully, this, this helps as an implementation tool in your comprehensive planning process. Next is specifically defining a safety goal with guiding principles that I'll go through in a moment, applying the approach that I just reviewed for you to, to how we move from those principles to, to actions. And then, as mentioned earlier, in parallel, we're in the midst of doing this now, evaluating crash data and listening, and, and just kicking, kicking off that listening to residents side. And from all that, bringing it together and starting, putting together an action plan, which is really the bottom line to this, of after we've listened, we see what's happened, what could happen based on these risk aspects, creating that action plan, and probably the most important word other than action in that statement is, is equitable. And that's, that's a very important theme, generally, a very important theme in Safe Streets for All, and I believe for sure within the city, and that is, who, who really needs the help? Which communities are underserved and really need the help of, of a program like this? Probably, most importantly, because they, they, they rely on modes other than a single occupant vehicle, and the ability to walk, bike, get to essential services safely. So as we go through the parts, as they... So, as we go through the prioritization process of these actions, that will be what we call an equity lens, as we look at a data-driven approach. Also, what communities are affected by this or could benefit, maybe it's a better way to phrase it. Okay? Next slide please. Yeah, and here's that quick overview of what the overarching goal is, probably no surprise to you, just fostering a safe and maintainable transportation network that minimizes the severe injuries and fatalities. And then each of those principles walks through your city process of planning through implementation of projects and how Safe Streets For All hits each of those, starting with that planning of a complete streets network, which is that multimodal redundancy aspect from Safe Streets For All, moving towards the design and operation of the streets to be consistent with these principles. Then, as you can see, just without going through every one of those, just how it falls in line with the exact process of understanding where the crashes are, listening to the risk factors, then starting to put that action plan together in an equitable manner, and then having specific actions that are scalable to your resources and to the opportunities for grant resources as well. So, just wanting to set realistic expectations as we go through this for all of us, particularly for the community. Next slide. Yeah, we just kicked off the public outreach schedule and why we wanted to alert you to this, to the program today and ensure you know that this is going on. As you can see, we have had a community champions meeting, so we had a select group of, we invited ten to twelve representatives of larger groups, church groups, business community, downtown, chamber of commerce types, and listened to them to kick it off, said, who should we talk to? Here's the type of outreach, the type of listening we want to do, what do they recommend to us as methods to do that? And you can see the dates of our pop-up from that, the dates of our pop-up events, the farmer's market, lost Ginger a moment if she would like to add, because she's attended all of those that have started, if she has any insight on what's happened to this point. But we just want to make sure you knew what schedule was coming and the outreach approach from starting at broader, get advice, to being accessible to folks through pop-up events and more summary meetings towards the end. But Ginger, if you'd like to add perspectives, that'd be helpful.
The pop-up events have been very successful, a lot of the citizens are very engaged. What we're getting a lot of feedback on is slowing down, people want speed to be slowed down on some of the streets within their areas. Another thing that we're seeing a lot about is improving the sidewalks. When we're at these pop-up events, we tell them, you know, basically, we can, some of the things that we can do that will affect them immediately, it's like slowing down the speed, are putting crosswalks in. So, we're encouraging them to do things or to ask for things that we can do immediately and not ask for, you know, some of the bigger projects that might take a little bit longer.
Yeah, thanks, Ginger. And one of the many things we've been working on together is the approach to this, that geographically, we're accessible, that we're accessible through the web, but also accessible with handouts, at pop-up events, understanding that not everyone has internet access, some really rely on it. And so, how do we have those different tools available to the residents to provide input, hopefully, in an equitable manner, as that's the goal? And so, you could see the locations as well as the approach to it and timing of it. Next slide please. Thanks. Yeah, and so, our team has put together a website, so I encourage you to take a look at that. That provides an overview of why we're doing this, how we're doing this, and opportunities for input from them. Next slide please. Embedded there, as well as at the outreach events, we have a survey, which is two-tier. One is a set of questions to understand where the risk locations would be, and just a balancing of understanding where they are, what they see, but also privacy as to, you know, so folks are comfortable in answering those questions. And then we also have an opportunity for them to mark on a map, as Ginger said, has already happened with physical maps, they could actually do it through the web as well to tag locations and say, I'm concerned about speeding or missing sidewalk or crosswalk links as shown illustratively there on the slide. Next slide. Yeah, and you could see the long list of products, I've covered most of these, I won't go through line by line, but our intent, in working with the leadership team, is that each of these products aren't one-timers, if you will, that we build a tool for safety evaluation that you can use long after the study is done. It's called a high-injury network that takes the best available crash data, maps it, so you can use it as an analysis tool. So, it's something that you hold on to, as well as survey techniques, the website, again, without going through each one, but just hope for a sustainable program, not just a one-timer, use this grant money best way possible, per direction from the leadership team. Next slide. Yeah, and just closing out with the timeline, you can see here that we are in the evaluation mode and the outreach mode, so gathering the data, analyzing the data in parallel to listening to the community, as I outlined earlier. Then we kind of regroup and really start to see, what do we learn from both of those and start to formulate that into actions? And those actions, again, would be engineering, but also potentially supporting enforcement, public engagement, et cetera, policy changes possibly. And that'll all be done early next year, and that's when we would be back to you to show you those in drafts, to get your insight before it's done. Next slide. Thank you.
All right, I had Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
And then, was it Counselor Joyner or Harris?
Did you receive any concerns?
It was Harris.
Oh, okay.
Safe streets have anything to do with those bike routes we have on our streets?
Bike routes.
The bike trail, whatever.
No, no, that's a good question, we're just in the midst of collecting now, so I don't have full summaries yet, but we wanted to keep you ahead of collecting and processing all those. You may have heard one or two, have you heard anything about the bike?
My portion is, it seems so unsafe to have the bike route next to the curving and the cars parking in the middle of the street. That's the situation I saw on Broadway this weekend at the Union Hall when they have engagements, and persons were parked in the bike route, as well as these little things curved out. I didn't even know where they were for a while, it's for parking. That seems more unsafe to me than letting the people park on the curb and then making the bike route to the left of the drive. It's throughout our city now.
Parking protected bike lanes?
Yeah, they're parking protected bike lanes.
And so, there is a piece behind that, that it does increase the safety for the bicyclists. It doesn't, there's a slight decrease in the safety for the vehicles that are traveling through those areas, but they still have plenty of clear, plenty of clear lane to delineate themselves from the parking lanes. But the intent behind it is to push the bicyclists and those who are the most vulnerable to vehicle traffic away, completely away from the vehicle traffic.
Have we had any accidents because of that? I mean, do you know of?
I would say, I'd say no, because the bike lanes are pretty much rendered useless with people parking in them.
Exactly, okay, thank you.
You want me to add? Counselor Harris.
Okay.
I want to bring your attention to one of your slides, the public engagement.
Yes.
Do you mind bringing up the public engagement schedule slide?
Yeah, slide number two. This is Route 10, I know you guys have been around the town and you've seen all of the railroad tracks and all of the eighteen-wheelers that come through this little town, right? In regards to the streets, some of these streets that we have in the city could be eighteen-wheelers from riding on them, but they ride on them all the time. Especially, and there's two streets here that I want to note on slide number two. One says Terminal Street, and Terminal Street is now called Reverend C.W. Harris Street.
Okay.
And then Booker Street, which is now Route Harris Way. Just wanted you to update, but we have incidents of tractor trailers coming down that street, and it's a sign there that says, no through.
Truck traffic, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No through trucks like that.
Right, right.
But they constantly come up and down, and the reason why I know, because I live on that street. And I was just wondering, when you started talking about, you know, engaging, is it anything? Because on that street, what we had was, at one point, a train ran over a tractor trailer on that street. So, I'm just wondering if there was any conversation thus far that you've had in regards to the situation that we have? We have a lot of railroad tracks always there. We have a lot of tractor trailers. There's a scale on Route 10, right here. So, we have them coming and going both ways, so I was just wondering, you know, in regards to any attention that you have focused on.
Well, that did come up in the community champions meeting, which is the pre-outreach, just saying, hey, be aware of, you described it very well, just as to what the challenge, just the fact that a lot of trucks are focused coming through, but the diversion, we will take a look at and see. That could show up in some of the counting that we do, because it shows the vehicle type, without getting too technical, but that's certainly, something certainly we'd want to coordinate with the police and eyes in the field to, and understanding of that as well. But thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Joyner, and then Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that I understand, you're conducting a study for this program, Safe Streets? And at the end of the survey, for, you know, for the implementation of it, are we counting on federal money? Is that, is the implementation a part of this total grant, or just, we just have the study portion?
Just the study portion.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and so, that will be part of what we look at, or are there funding opportunities? But it will not be funded.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you'll be looking at that, you'll be looking at funding opportunities as well?
Yeah, that's important for folks to understand, is that this is the start.
Okay.
Right, and to understand where the real problem areas are, and are there any quick-it, low-cost things that can be done with signing and markings versus more expensive and set realistic expectations based on the scale of what it would take to fix this?
Sure, sure, appreciate it, that clarifies a lot, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The good piece behind it is, is in order for us to go after the federal funding to complete these projects, we need the study.
Okay. That's good, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Gore.
Just, what is kind of the, I know you said you had other meetings with other staff members, but kind of what is the role of planning with this? And how does Complete Streets fit into the picture? Because I know we had that resolution, we said they was working on that, we talked about doing an APA plan for the city and all these other bigger picture items. The bike lanes that we installed was a part of Complete Streets and looking at those bigger projects. So, is that feeding into that initiative, or is that initiative feeding into this? Like, are they talking to each other? Because that goes into our comprehensive plan, land use, and these other zoning and other bigger topics that staff is already working on? So, I was trying to figure out, what has that coordination been thus far?
You want me to, I can take that.
So, where it had started was, I had compiled everything, so we'd had some Safe Streets information from one of the, a couple of years ago, from one of the schools doing it. We've passed them that information, all the projects that we have going on within the city and any other study, previous studies that have been done have been all dumped into their, they set up a OneDrive for us to use, so we've dumped all of that information there, and it's helping feed this study, yes.
So, where's the coordination with the planning department with Complete Streets and those efforts that council's already endorsed?
Yeah, the planning director is on our leadership team.
Okay.
So, on every meeting, helping with the guidance to me, as to what's done. And it's a really important link, right? Because as we, as asked, this is a study, right? So, it's starting to lay out an approach for safety, so hopefully, that's a city decision but become that, from a safety goal in the comprehensive plan to how do you get it done? So, the linkage is really important, particularly as you get back to the network aspect of safety.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, the linkage is important, but I'm also thinking about, like, the operational part of it, how to operationalize this concept? Because his department is actually the one charged with the comprehensive plan, working to work on zoning and these, public works obviously has a role to play, but I feel like the planning aspect really does fall that apartment, so I want to make sure you guys are, like, working together, not that he's in a leadership position in the committee, but it's coordination to make sure that we're not overstepping or duplicating efforts. Because what I see when I listen to this, I'm like, well, this is Complete Streets, but a little bit different. And so, that's why I want to make sure that, even though we have a study, that the study doesn't compete with what we have already endorsed, and his team has already been working on it. I don't want to speak for Director Ward, but I just want to make sure, am I over? Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not having two separate visions and plans being done with the same resources. And that if there is monies available that may have been identified at the end of this, it is still in coordination of thought processes in regards to that plan and comprehensive approach to make sure that we're working as one. Just want to make sure that was on the table and that we're making sure we're doing that.
Yeah, and I could speak from other experiences and the importance of what you're saying, if that is appropriate, that, so the coordination of that Complete Streets network, what we see and coordinate, because really, that's, comes from planning, right?
Yeah.
And then there's the actions, and then how are those actions documented? And can they help in redevelopment? And say, hey, this has been tagged in your study area.
Right.
This is something you have to do as part of your, and again, I'm speaking for other jurisdictions that I've done with other jurisdictions, but it creates that map of what do, action plan, what do we need to do, and how do we fund it? Is it a grant, is it a proffer or a development contribution, is it CIP? Is it, that's?
Correct, even though signage weight finding is another thing we already put in our budget. So, I want to make sure, I'm like, I heard signage, I'm like, wait a minute. I know that Director Ward's got us a little allocation started in this budget cycle, so to make sure you guys are just making sure you're thinking holistically. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? No, okay, thank you guys very much. The next presentation that we have is one for some young gentlemen here in Hopewell with the Guys With Ties program. Unfortunately, we only have, I think, just a couple here tonight. The others are at back-to-school night, so I'd like to invite the young men to come up, along with Ms. Sharah Fuller. Okay. And then, Ms. Fuller, if you'd like to, you know, just give us a few, you know, comments about the program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and everyone in council. These are two of the young men who were doing the Guys With Ties program. Guys With Ties was something done at Harry E. James throughout this last year. These two are now sixth graders over at Carter G. Woodson, so they have graduated and gone on to the next stage of youthfulness, which, that's kind of great. But in this program, they had to work on their self-esteem. They've had to work on their output, what they, how they carried themselves, and how they worked around other youth of their peers and even younger children. So, they had to maintain perfect, not perfect, but pretty good grades, behaviors. They had to work on their moral compass. And in the name of Guys With Ties, they also had to learn how to tie a tie. They also had to have at least one public speaking event. Now, I'm an adult, and I get nervous when I talk to y'all. I couldn't imagine being a twelve- or eleven-year-old kid being on the news. And both of these young men and the other young men in the program had to speak publicly. They also had to write a one-page essay about what Guys With Ties meant to them. These young men excelled all year, nobody failed in anything that they were assigned to do. Mustafa's dad is here, and he can attest that every single meeting, either we- Um, Mustafa's dad is here, and he can attest that every single meeting, either we were there, we were going somewhere. These, these young men, they did all the work. We were just the keys and the wheels to get them where they had to go, but they did all of these works phenomenally. Um, Chief Garrett from Fort Greg Adams, he is the leader of that function, and he tied that with Harry E. James, with Mr. Cherry, and Ms. Felicia Jones. And they made sure that this happened, because they want the youth to grow, they want to see them succeed. And we just want to thank them for the hard work that they did as, as kids, because they're doing great, better than some adults. So, a round of applause to these lovely young men. And I do apologize, there was back-to-school night, so the other kids are, their parents are trying to, trying to be other places.
And, uh, Madam Clerk, would you like to go ahead and read out the proclamation? And, um, anyone from city council would like to come down and, uh, take a picture with these fine gentlemen?
Can we, can we come, like, right here?
Yeah.
Can we take a picture up here? Would y'all like to go behind him?
And the other boys who are at school, I'm going to take theirs to their school for them to be able to receive theirs.
No, come on back here.
Come back here. You see Ms. Gore, you follow? Come back here.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to be the center, second center of attention.
All right.
One of them over there. Keep my bag up there. One of them over there. Come over here, come on. What's your, what's your name? Mustafa.
Mustafa. And Davi. All right. And y'all with Carter G. Woodson?
And did she not want to be in front? You guys sure? Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Is it your mom, right? She did a good job. Congratulations.
I'm sorry.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations? Congratulations?
Yes, this is my son. They will be at Carter G.
Oh, that's my, he forgot my mom bought the outfit.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I don't know how. Good stomach.
Okay. Uh, we're going to continue on, uh, with the agenda, uh, our Communications from Citizens section. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you read the statement?
Communications from citizens, period, limited in total time to thirty minutes, is part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing council shall approach the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number, and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any items scheduled for consideration on regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any questions must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, or abusive or slanderous statements, or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council and removed, subject to appeal to a majority of council. See rules four oh five and four oh six.
Uh, first one I have signed up for tonight is Ms. Sharaw Fuller.
Good evening again. Uh, my name is Sharaw Fuller, I live in Ward Five here in Hopewell. Um, as you all know, one of those young boys that is my son. Um, and as many people in this room, we're, we're parents, or grandparents, or aunts, uncles, cousins, we have family. As we're all aware with what occurred over the weekend, this city is very, very small. And I fight back here saying this, but we need people to speak up. We cannot sit here and point fingers at city council, we can't blame the city manager, we can't blame anybody on this board. When we all live here, and we all know the issues that's happening in the city, and no one's dialing nine-one-one, no one's putting in P-three tips. We need people to speak up. I know that this is going out online, it's going out everywhere, people need to speak up. I don't care if you dial nine-one-one or the non-emergency number, I don't care. But we need people to speak up, because people passing away, I know personally, I don't want to bury my son. Y'all saw my son, that is, that is my, that's my baby. Everyone has babies, whether they're fur babies, or, you know, physical babies, like people, people, they're your babies. But we need people speaking up and reaching out to the police. If they don't want to be, you know, told who it is, there's ways to be anonymous. But the, the violence that is happening, it has to come to an end. Like, it really needs to come to an end. And I'm saying that personally, because I'm, I'm a family member of someone who's lost a loved one to violence. And that's not a badge of honor. That's, that's a badge of shame, because it should never occur. So, I'm asking the city people, the people who are residents of Hopewell, I don't care if you own, I don't care if you rent, I don't care what the circumstances are, to please speak up and do your part, and if they see someone doing something they shouldn't be doing, be that uncle, be that Tia, be that whatever your special nickname is to that person, be that loved one to speak up and tell someone that their behavior is wrong. Because it's not okay, because eleven-year-olds who don't listen become thirty-year-old, thirty-one-year-olds who are being arrested by Lepiduridi, or Chief Taylor, or somebody else. They become adults who don't listen. So, either we govern our children first, or the state's going to govern them, some kind of way. And we can't point our fingers at the city council people, because they, they live in the city too. They're dealing with this violence just like we are. And I'm sure nobody wants to be ducking and dodging bullets, we just don't. So, I'm asking cities, the cities, citizens of the city to speak up. And I know that everyone on this board, you're all trying your best, you got handed a poop sandwich, and you're trying to turn it into a gourmet meal, with all the problems that y'all have got, and I applaud y'all, and I pray for y'all, I really do, because y'all got a lot on your plate. And I appreciate y'all taking the time that you're doing to try to fix these issues. I really do thank you, and I pray for each and every last one of y'all individually, because it means that y'all care. It really shows that y'all care more than what people see. I couldn't imagine doing a job day in and day out, and someone's judging you for your job, and disrespecting you, and then saying you didn't smile enough. So, thank you for what y'all do, and everyone, please do your part. There's a basketball tournament coming up, it's a Stop the Violence tournament, it's on August third. There's neighborhood watch meetings coming up, please come out and do your part, citizens.
Uh, next person that I have signed up is Mr. Richard Commander.
Y'all probably know me, but I'm Richard Commander, I'm the director of the Hopewell Food Pantry and the Clothing Place. And we just ended our fiscal year, and I thought it was appropriate for me to come here and tell you what we've done and what's going on with the Hopewell Food Pantry and the Clothing Place. First of all, the Hopewell Food Pantry has set records the past two years in the number of clients we serve. That's good and bad. I mean, it gives us a big number, but it also means more people are in need. This year, we had, we served over twenty thousand client visits. Almost a total population of the city came to visit us. And you can come up once a month, so many of them are duplicates, but whether you're a one-timer or a duplicate, you get the same amount of food. So, we had, we served twenty thousand people, and we're very proud of that. Now, we also, um, want you to know that Hopewell's a very generous place. And we, we had a great fundraising this year to help us be able to afford it. Now, the Hopewell Food Pantry is somewhat different than many food pantries. Number one, we only food. And we've also, all, we're forty-one years old, by the way, this year, forty-one. And, um, we've always tried to buy food. Now, we get donations from lots of places, lots of Food Lion, and, and Wawa, and on and on, and Hopewell, and individuals, and, and whatever. But we all, we've always felt like we should subsidize that with money. So, last year, we had sixteen thousand seven hundred eighty-four client visits, and we spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of funds that we raised to buy extra food for all these individuals and families. Now, many places only give what we get for free, we do not. And I, our clients are blessed because of that, that, uh, approach that we take. And a lot of times, they come up there for the first time expecting a bag of canned goods, and they go away with a shopping cart full of food. And that we're very proud of, because that is, it's been done, because Hopewell supports us, and other, other places do, do too. And we work very hard to make sure that our clients are getting the best we can give. Now, five years ago, six years ago, the Shepherd's Place closed down, and we took it over, and it's now called The Clothing Place. And The Clothing Place has been revamped, we take debit cards and credit cards, we're open six days a week, ten to two. And we, we are taking in between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars a month in sales. And that's a lot of clothes, when you think that most clothes cost a couple bucks. And the money that they don't need to pay their bills comes to the Hopewell Food Pantry to help with our food purchases. If you haven't been down to The Clothing Place in a while, you should stop by there, same place where, on the corner of two oh one, uh, East City Point Road.
Mayor, three minutes has passed.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to allow Mr. Commander to finish his remarks?
Some will.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Pelham and seconded by Counselor Joyner. Uh, is there any discussion? See no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Yeah, I said yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I really almost finished, but the idea is that you, we, we believe that Hopewell needs what we offer. The Clothing, the Shepherd's Place was, was going to close down, and we said, no, we'll take it over, and we've taken it over, and we've modernized it. Didn't do a good job when they were there for forty years, but we have made it a little bit better. So, you should come by and see what's there, and there's some, and it's just great. We hear lots of compliments from, uh, people that go there, and you can get free clothes there if you check in with us and with the, all the social services, if you had some real reason you can't afford the two dollars for a shirt or something. But anyway, we are proud to be at Hopewell, we are proud to serve Hopewell, and we want to thank the board, council, I mean, for all you've done for us too. Hopewell gave us a donation last year, we went a long way to helping us, and we hope you'll consider at least that much or more. Because our, our, we have, we have fifty percent in client visits in the past two years, and you all know why. Go down to the store and look at the prices. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, here are none, moving on to public hearings. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you read the statement while Mr. Ward comes up?
All persons addressing council shall step to the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number, and limit comments to three minutes. No one may address council more than once per meeting unless granted permission by the presiding officer. Speakers address council as a body, not individual counselors. Questions are asked of counselors and staff through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements, or incites disorderly conduct in the council chamber may be reprimanded by the presiding officer and removed from the meeting upon a majority vote of counselors present, excluding any counselor who is a subject of the motion. See rules four oh five and four oh six.
Okay. Public hearing number one.
Judging Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, our first public hearing tonight is related to a modification to development standards application for fifty-one zero five Oaklawn Boulevard, also identified as parcel two four zero 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 one zero. This modification to development standards request relates to, uh, allowing a second freestanding sign at a second entrance. Uh, this is the, uh, future cookout restaurant that is currently under construction, and our ordinance only permits one freestanding sign per parcel. Cookout has proposed the sign that is shown here. It will conform to the city's, uh, freestanding sign specifications. You may remember, we recently, uh, city council approved a similar-type sign for advanced auto parts just up, up the street from here, from this particular location. And when considering modification to development standards applications, um, we have these four criteria that we go through. I will not go through each of them, but, uh, staff did look at all of these and believes that the application, um, does, so in these, in this particular case, with modification to development standards, if you answer, uh, no, then the application should not be granted. So, we went through those, and staff believes that the application, uh, is sufficient and recommends approval. Planning Commission, uh, believes the same thing, they recommended approval five to zero at their, uh, public hearing that they held on June thirteenth. And as of today, uh, our office has not received any written or spoken public comment. I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Are there any questions, uh, for Mr. Ward, before we open the public hearing?
I'll do a question.
Okay.
Is it, uh, possible to change the zoning ordinance for these businesses that have a two-way entrance so that we can eliminate coming to council unless it's a safety hazard or something? Uh, I'm just wondering.
Yes, we can. Um, you know, as you, as you all know, we are starting our zoning ordinance update, uh, very, very soon. We'll actually have a kickoff meeting, um, with staff, I think it's tomorrow. Uh, excuse me, it's on Thursday. Um, this is at the top of the list as far as signage goes, in, in my estimation. We, our signage ordinance needs a complete overhaul, and this is up at the very top.
Yeah. And, and the other thing is, um, okay, because there's not that many more businesses that have that two-way interest on that main thoroughfare, is it?
On that particular stretch, no, but, um, we do up, you know...
Further down.
Nor, northeast from this location, when you're heading Oaklawn and Woodlawn.
Mm-hmm.
Where the advanced auto parts is, yes.
Quite a few, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Are there any others that have any questions? Okay, here are none, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Uh, I don't have anyone signed up for this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, see no none. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, Counselor Denton?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, uh, recommendation for approval for the sign, and, uh, the modification of development standard request.
Okay. So, your motion is to approve the modification to development standard as presented?
As presented.
Okay.
Second that.
Right. Motion's been made by Counselor Denton and seconded by Counselor Joyner. Is there any discussion? See no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Uh, public hearing number two, Mr. Ward.
This evening, I'm bringing to you, um, staff and the CDBG Committee's recommendations for our upcoming CDBG program year. Just have a quick presentation, um, that we typically do every year, just to give some quick background on the program itself, and then, uh, funding recommendations at the end. The Community Development Block Grant Program, uh, is funded through HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department at the, at the federal level. We are an entitlement community, which means we automatically receive this funding every year, we do not have to apply for it. HUD's mission is to create strong, sustainable, inclusive communities and quality, affordable homes for all. And when we look to make CDBG funding recommendations, we, we have to make sure that the funding meets one of three national objectives. Uh, those being, number one, benefit to low and moderate-income persons, number two, the prevention or elimination of slums and blight, or the funds must be spent on an urgent need which typically, uh, follows a presidentially-declared disaster. We do have a consolidated plan, this is the, uh, fifth year of this five-year plan, uh, we are entering the fifth year of the five-year plan with the, um, following goals stated as priorities, and that's rehabilitation of housing, uh, adult and preschool literacy under education, household services, particularly for elderly and disabled, infrastructure improvements, and homelessness prevention. This chart just quickly shows you the amount of funding... This chart just quickly shows you the amount of funding the city's received over the last, uh, several years. When it's all added up, it comes to over one point five million dollars since twenty eighteen. Uh, the city has been receiving funding since, I believe, the early seventies. HUD allows us to, uh, place funding in different categories. So for administration, the city's allowed up to twenty percent. For funding public service programs, we are allowed up to fifteen percent total. And all other programs, which, uh, under our city's goals would be infrastructure and housing rehab, uh, we can spend sixty percent, sixty-five percent of our allocation, or more. So this presentation differs just a little bit from the one that you received in your packet, because we held the CDBG committee meeting last week on Wednesday, and I believe your packet information was submitted to the clerk on Tuesday. So there, um, after the, uh, committee meeting on Wednesday, we do have some minor changes to what was in your packet. Staff and, uh, the committee are recommending forty-eight thousand four eighty-three for general administration, that, that, uh, meets our twenty percent cap. And under public service, remember, we're capped at fifteen percent total. So, uh, the recommendation is to fund, uh, the organization Hebron and their program Rocks to Rulers, which is a youth entrepreneurship development program for eleven thousand three sixty-three. Healthy Families for their Child Abuse Prevention Program at ten thousand dollars. And the James House, um, for their Domestic Violence Intervention at fifteen thousand dollars. Those three funding allocations meet the fifteen percent cap. In addition, we've had a second request, and this is, um, unrelated to our twenty-four, twenty-five funding. This is a request related to unspent funds from previous years. Uh, and this request comes from the Public Works Department, uh, because of the emergency situation of the Winston Churchill Storm Drainage, um, problems that are over there, and that project that came about. Uh, Public Works is requesting two hundred thousand dollars in unspent CDBG funds to offset the cost, some of the costs of that project. Uh, we have checked with HUD, and this project is eligible for those funds. So for tonight, after the public hearing, uh, staff is requesting, uh, city council to approve the budget as presented, uh, totaling two hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. That would be specifically for this program year. We are also asking you to consider the request from Public Works for two hundred thousand dollars, um, for a total of four forty-two, four seventeen. Uh, the most important part of tonight's presentation is that we take action on, at least on the two hundred and forty-two thousand four seventeen for this evening, because we are under a HUD deadline to get this done by August sixteenth. In addition to that, uh, we are requesting that you provide the city manager the authorization to submit the, uh, fifth-year annual action plan to HUD. I am available for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Ward? Uh, Counselor Joyner?
I do have one question. It has to do with the unspent funds. What's the timeframe on that?
So we have unspent funds dating back all the way to twenty eighteen.
Uh huh.
And HUD, um, in fact, we will, next year, we will have to spend the unspent funds from that program year, twenty eighteen. So that puts us at, uh, what, eight years? You can have fun, unspent funds for eight years.
Okay.
If you don't spend it, HUD takes the money back.
So this two hundred thousand dollars could, I mean, sup- suppose we didn't, council didn't vote tonight to authorize the use of this for the Winston Churchill project? This would, this would be out there, and we would not be in jeopardy of losing it?
That's correct.
Okay. Right away, okay, thank you.
That's correct, yes. And you, and you, if you did choose to not take action on the two hundred thousand dollar, uh, request from Public Works, that's fine. We can, we can revisit that later. It's the, um, the two forty-two,
Got it.
four seventeen that we need action on tonight. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor Gore, and then Counselor Pelham.
Well, I, I, I can't remember what year we switched over to how we allocate CDBG funds, it's been more towards infrastructure. Um, but prior to that, as you know, we worked on with community groups to try to do, um, some support. I know there's some stuff here, but I know we did shift to kind of do, um, that type of improvements, right? But what were the discussions in regards to the two hundred thousand? That kind of mimicked some of the old thought processes and how to do some community investment, um, with the CDBG funds, in particular to the wards that are, uh, represented on the committee for the dollars. I mean, were there any conversations about regarding that type of thought process? Because I'm, I'm not in favor of using the money for the, this pro- this road project. Because I feel that, you know, during COVID, I was big advocate of using those COVID dollars for community investment and per people investment. And I understand the city had needs, which is kind of where we pivoted, we did what we could, but we really had to focus dollars on other efforts, and I still was not a fan of that. But I understood, you know, hey, I was in the minority in that regard, but, um, and there was other needs, right? But I do feel like this instance, I do, I feel strongly that it needs to go back to, um, investing in the people and, and those particular wards, um, because they're clearly designated for this funding for a reason. And, um, with the other, with the Denver bathrooms that we have, you appoint to any given statistic that needs improvement, why we should, in my opinion, use those funds to try to improve something in regards to that, whether it's, uh, workforce opportunities, um, facade improvements on housing, making, you know, improving the physical environment, other things, I just, I just can't first, and I understand the road is important, I get it. But I also feel like this is the reason why these neighborhoods are constantly in, in this situation, is we're not making the investment. So I can't support that, but I just wanna know, where, where are their conversations regarding trying to go back to the true intent of CDBG?
I would say with this, um, most recent committee meeting, no, we didn't really dive too deeply into that. But, but I will say this, um, we did do some infrastructure projects about, I wanna say it was three years ago. It was Maple Street and New York Avenue were the two that come to mind.
Maple Street, yeah.
And there were some, um, there were storm drainage projects, and, and they were in qualified census tracts. Then we had some staff, we were supposed to do two more the following year, two, two more smaller storm drainage type projects. But then we had such huge staffing turnover in Public Works Department that you may remember, they weren't able to do those projects in time, so we had to switch it to, because of our HUD timeliness constraint, we had to switch the projects, and we, that's when we did three and a half street park improvements. And then we fell under the same problem last year. We didn't have projects ready to go, and, uh, we were at risk of not meeting our timeliness expenditure, uh, constraint for HUD. And that was due to a different problem, and that was a, a different, our housing rehab sub-recipient not spending their money in time. And so we did another neighborhood, and that's the Westwood Park Neighborhood Improvement. So it was not a conscious effort to move away from infrastructure projects, but when I approached Public Works to try to get a list of projects, you know, to start that again, this was the project that was put forward to me as the one that was most urgently needed, uh, in terms of funding.
And, and I get that, um, but I wanna go back to the intent of what, what council adjusted, the use of CDBG funds to make improvements in the particular neighborhoods that are affected in these wards. I would like to see what the status is for those projects, when you go, and Public Works is here. I would like to see Dr. Minker, we can get that list that, um, I believe Dr. Ward was asking for, um, for, for the committee to consider if this doesn't pass.
We did have that discussion, I had it, anyway, because.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of going back to that direction. Cause again, the key's being overlooked. But hey, I appreciate it, you're, I follow everything you're saying, I'm just telling you how I feel, right? So I think if we can pivot back to one of those projects that you could probably recommend that was passed over, or something else, uh, specifically a neighborhood, then I can support that, but I can't support it.
That's fine, we can always revisit the two hundred thousand again. Uh, we are, you do not need to take, you're not under any kind of con- time constraint to make a decision on that particular pot of money this evening.
Okay, I appreciate that, Director. I'm done.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Pelham, and then Counselor Denton.
Yeah, well, the same thing, uh, that, that was my forte in the meeting is that the neighborhood projects take priority over Winston Churchill Drive. You know it's a main thoroughfare, uh, the neighborhoods always get pushed back and neglected, uh, from the infrastructure. I mean, and with that, after the comments, I, I would like to make a motion so that we don't include the two hundred thousand dollars now, because we have another option that we can use the money for as well, even though we did promise, I mean, sort of problem, not promise, but say that we would try to use it for Winston Churchill Drive. There's another consideration as well that we can consider, so. Whenever.
I second it.
Oh, I, I, I didn't make the motion.
We gotta do the public hearing first.
Do the public hearing, when, when it come time, I will make that recommendation that we approve for the two forty-two, four seventeen, and hold back and discuss more about the two hundred thousand. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Denton?
Um, yes, I'd like to ask our city manager. This, um, emergency repair that we're having to make on Winston Churchill. I don't believe we have any money in this fiscal year budget to cover that, or do we?
Uh, Mr. Branson is, we, we've been researching.
I, and this is ongoing, so.
Right, yeah, so, um, we don't have any money in this budget for that. We do need to come back at the August meeting to make a budget adjustment to pay for it. And the money will have to come from carry, carryover funds from twenty-four. So it looks like we will have sufficient, um, money, kind of the positive net revenue from the fiscal year just ended to cover that. But we'll have more information about that piece, and that's where the funding will most likely come from, and it'll be back before you at your August twenty-seventh meeting. So it's gonna, we have, we, we're gonna have to pay for that.
We don't even know how much is going to really, what the total bill will be yet.
We don't know exactly what it's gonna be, so we'll have a better estimate by when we come before you, right? Well, I think we should have a pretty close estimate, um, to, for that, and, um, we can make that. So that, that will, that's the plan at this point, and that's the plan for where the funding would come from.
I mean, I like the idea of putting it in the neighborhoods where it's needed, but at the same time, we've got to take care of these expenses in a responsible way. So if you would get that information to us, city manager, that would be great. So we can determine where we're gonna get this money.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Pelham?
Yeah. And that's being said, when you place it on the agenda, maybe this item should go in there too, so that we have all the information. That's why we need to know what the end-of-year savings is for all departments, anywhere, under the coffee table, under the carpet, under wherever y'all got it, so we know the total savings for the whole year of fiscal year twenty-four, so we can balance that against the decision, whether this federal money is gonna be used or those savings or whatever, so. I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? Uh, I don't have anyone signed up for this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on it that didn't sign up? Okay. See and none. We'll go ahead and close it. All right. Uh, Counselor Denton?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we defer the vote on this tonight until we do get the information from the Robert Bond Group.
You're talking just the two hundred thousand part?
Yeah, the two hundred thousand, we can go ahead and.
But you're okay with approving?
Make a substitute motion?
Uh, approve the twenty twenty-five to CDBG budget totaling two forty-two, four seventeen.
As presented tonight?
As presented tonight, to provide authorization for the city manager to submit the fifth-year annual action plan to HUD.
Second. But, um, and do we need to say defer the two hundred thousand to later? Does that need to be a part of the motion?
It does not for HUD purposes. Um, I just need a motion allocating and appropriating the two forty-two, four seventeen.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Denton and, uh, seconded by Counselor Pelham. Is there any other discussion? Yeah. Uh, to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, uh, CDBG budget totaling two hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars, uh, and to provide, uh, well, as presented tonight, and to provide authorization for the city manager to submit the fifth-year annual action plan to HUD.
Can we just add there's a friendly amendment to defer the two hundred thousand, so people will know?
To the August meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Second.
You okay with that, Counselor Denton?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what they said, they were coming back.
Yeah, then we'll know what.
It's August twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
It's the last weekend off.
Everyone understand the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to R one, uh, Mr. Heartless.
Good evening, everyone, again. Uh, so what we're gonna talk about? All right, so what we've gotta talk about tonight, uh, we've got an ordinance update, um, that directly correlates with, uh, recent, um, a recent, uh, not policy change, but, uh, program change with it, with the Department of Environmental Quality. So if you can move down to the, well, actually, I'll just read off it. If you wanted to just move to the present, yeah, thank you. Okay. So, at the June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three State Water Control Board meeting, the board approved and adopted the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Regulation, uh, that's nine VAC twenty-five dash eight seventy-five, and approved the repeal of the Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations, nine VAC twenty-five dash eight forty, the Erosion and Sediment Control and Stormwater Management Certification Regulations, nine VAC twenty-five dash eight fifty, and the Virginia Stormwater Management Program Regulations, VAC, uh, twenty-five dash eight seventy. So, uh, just kind of a, a main piece behind us, um, what they did was they, uh, the Department of Environmental Quality had a stormwater program, um, and an erosion and sediment control that they were separate, they combined the two together. So, um, that eight forty and the, uh, eight seventy have been combined, or are now the eight seventy-five. So the intent behind the, um, uh, the intent behind this is that we have to update our ordinance with the city in order to remain in regulation with our MS four program to stay in compliance with the Department of Environmental Quality. So the city currently owns and operates municipal, uh, the municipal separate storm sewer system, which is the MS four program that is regulated under the Federal Clean Water Act through a permit, I'm having trouble seeing that. Through permit issued to the Department of Environmental Quality, thank you. Uh, through this permit, the city has been operating as both Virginia Erosion and Sediment Control Program and the Virginia Stormwater Management Program. Uh, the city's V S, V E S C P and the V S M P, which the acronyms are just, the, uh, the paragraph prior to that, have been conducted under the nine VAC eight forty and the eight seventy, respectively, under state regulations. Next, please. And then as of July first, twenty twenty-four, the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Act, the V S M A, and the reference to the title codes are there on the screen as well, um, has become effective. The bill commonly referred to is the Conservation Bill, combine the stormwater management and erosion and sediment control program requirements into the V S M A, which is the new program. And then under this bill, it effectively replaces that, um, the eight forty and the eight seventy, and combining them into the, uh, eight seventy-five now. Starting June first, twenty twenty-four, or that was July first, twenty twenty-four, yeah, July first, twenty twenty-four. So when it comes down to it, uh, all changes that are based on the model ordinance provided by the memorandum from the Department of Environmental Quality. So the Department of Environmental Quality already did the public engagement and outreach piece, um, and then they even provided a sample ordinance for, uh, all the localities to, to make these up. Um, and then they even provided a sample ordinance for, uh, all the localities to, to make these updates to their ordinances so that we can remain in, uh, compliance. Due to state regulation changes, the modification made to the city's current ordinance, due to creation of the, uh, the V S M P, uh, which replaces the, the V E S C P and the V S M P authority that the city currently operates under. The intention behind these regulation changes is to eliminate any confusion, redundancy, and conflicts that may have existed between the state's stormwater management and erosion and sediment control regulations. And the extent of the revisions made to the ordinance include, but are not limited to, minute changes to definitions to sync with the state codes, syntactic changes, eliminations of any reference to be repealed to state code or regulations, and the addition of new state code and regulations that may be referenced. All right, so to ma- maintain compliance with state law in the city's MS four permit, uh, chapter fourteen of the city ordinance, Erosion and Sediment Control and the, and Stormwater Management Program, staff request revision to reflect the new language under the Virginia Erosion and Sediment Control Act. Um, the new ordinance is attached and, um, that we had sent to Brittany, um, uh, for you all to view. Next, please. Oh, okay. Uh, the one main, um, caveat with this as well, uh, there are no technical changes to the policy. There are some minor technical changes that Department of Environmental Quality has, um, put on the new programs. But this, there's no technical, there are no technical requirement changes that are going to affect the city. Uh, this is strictly just changing verbiage to combine the two programs together and, like I said, reduce that redundancy and all that. So in order for us to maintain, or maintain our compliance with the Department of Environmental Quality, we have to make these updates to our ordinance. That's pretty much all I have, if there was any specific questions, I've got Goshen Telly here, who's our interim Stormwater Program Manager. Um, he, he knows some of these, uh, particular, uh, uh, changes that they had made. He's got significantly better working knowledge with it, so if we've got any questions, I can bring him up and he can, uh, field any of those questions that, that you all may have.
Okay, are there any other questions or any questions? Okay, seeing no lights, uh, Counsel Denton.
Oh, okay, I make the motion that we approve the revised ordinance to, um, to.
As presented?
Is that okay?
Is that okay?
Just, do I need to say all this other? Um, let's just say, we, we, we revert to revise this ordinance to reflect the new language under the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Act. Chapter fifteen.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counsel Denton and seconded by Counsel Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Counsel Palam?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, uh, moving on.
Could you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you all, have an evening.
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on to.
Wait, excuse me?
We heard you, Counsel Holloway, Counsel Harris is not at the DA's, so his vote did not count, we got your vote.
All right, moving on to R-two, uh, Mr. Branson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Council, um, here before requesting on behalf of the assessor, uh, the assessor's office tonight, um, that we actually, uh, increase the FTEV existing position from two-thirds time to full-time. Um, the background behind this is that we, we've been actually well understaffed in that office for a long time. Um, with the, Ron, uh, who's our assist, who's our interim city, um, our city assessor, has come in. One of the things he's done, he allowed, his initial analysis was if we can add these positions, not knowing at the time, either of us, this was not a full-time position, so our oversight, but we add these positions, get these staffed, um, we can do the reassessment in-house this year, save the city about three hundred thousand dollars. Um, then we found that this was a three-quarter time position, so we'd like to make it a full-time position. Um, the cost of approximately eleven thousand dollars plus salary roll-ups, we, um, will be covered by salary savings since these positions are, we have two positions currently vacant, and we'll be out there recruiting for them and hopefully have them filled, um, in the next couple of months. Um, so that's, that's the request, it's not a, it is an existing position, but it's going from that part-time to full-time and, um, be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Counsel Denton's on fire tonight in the, in the button.
I know, I know, he needs to get his rest. But I'd like to make a motion that we grant the full-time position for the attack, uh, for the assessor's office, changing part-time.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counsel Denton, seconded by Counsel Palam. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Counsel Palam?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna table my CCR until the next meeting, um, because Ms. Burton gave me some information that I didn't know about until, uh, tonight, uh, so.
What about all these other things before your CCR?
We don't have anything.
Counsel's pending request, I have one.
Okay.
HR, when, when would HR start presenting in the packet for us to review the updates to the HR manual?
So it was determined by counsel that you guys would take turns, um, sitting with the HR director. Um, and I, I have failed to give you a list of those chapters, but you came to the office to get those last week, I understand. So we can start scheduling time for that.
It was a committee, wasn't it?
But we, you haven't really formed it yet.
Right. Okay. What would it be?
There were some volunteers to be on the committee, but we never followed through.
Yeah, I think it was, um, Jasmine, Brenda, and Janice.
Okay.
Okay.
She gave me a flash drive of the whole HR thing.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Gore?
Yeah, I think, um, in regards to the CCR, I do wanna ask for there to be a review of the jurisdictions in the former city attorney's memo that we modeled the ordinance after to see if there is verbiage in their charters regards to, um, the ability to make ordinance. So, um, we have a memo, there's, I think Lynchburg, Prince George, Richmond, a few others were mentioned in there as, were cited. Um, so I'd like for staff to look over if, if they do have something in their charters, but we know they didn't get it turned.
All right, we actually have nine minutes for closing comments. All right, let's see, let's start with Counsel Holloway. Maybe here, Counsel Holloway.
Yes, there you go, I apologize, I couldn't, for, for move the, uh, mic, but, uh, better for just to, uh, I'm an alum, do apologize for me not being able to be there tonight, and look forward to, uh, being on the DA's for a special meeting. Uh, just again, thank you all, and I hope you have a safe night.
Counsel Palam?
Yes, as a citizen, uh, Fuller mentioned on, uh, this, this Saturday, August the third, next Saturday, there's gonna be a stop to balance, uh, another rally, I guess, for the kids to try, and some educational opportunities. And maybe we can change the young people mindset of snitching, don't give you stitches, to give you a safer community. And it is sad that a house full of people saw someone shot somebody and no one saw anything. So you get tired of that, and, uh, somebody has to, when you see something, you gotta say something. And, uh, so another family and a whole community neighborhood want more than these, these young people deaths. So I thank you for putting it out there, and if anyone would like to contribute to that effort, please let me know, contact me. And we, we just still taking, uh, uh, contributions for, uh, to make this a successful event. And as school opens, I guess y'all know, for Hopewell next Monday, coming up Monday, July the twenty-sixth, is it twenty-ninth? Whatever it is, this Monday coming is the only one, and so be safe. They have cameras, they, Carji Woodson and Hopewell High School for speeders. So feel welcome to speed and bail our, our treasury department up, so, I mean, so we can have money, savings, and all the citizens don't have to pay taxes, so. So, but please drive safe so someone child would not be hit, and, uh, teach your children to do the same. And I think that's all I have, and have a great week.
Okay, Counsel Denton?
I just want to say to Austin, is he back there? You all take your, your abilities for granted. For the first time in seven and a half years, I have been able to hear this meeting tonight just as good as any of you. Because IT has been working on the sound, they have upgraded, right, Austin? And it is absolutely wonderful. I can hear you, so be careful what you say now. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Joyner?
Sure, I'd like to wish everyone a good evening. I wanted to say that, um, uh, it's been great to have the new, uh, trash system implemented. I know there's still some bumps along the way, um, but I certainly hope that the worst is over. If anybody does have, has concerns, I know we received today, uh, from a commercial, um, tenant that they had not received their extra trash can, please don't hesitate to call, uh, Waste Management and get that taken care of. But, um, wanted to thank Public Works for, um, doing their best to, to manage this process, I know it's not been easy. Um, and of course, I, I, I want to echo Sharaf Fuller's comments, um, violence in the city is, um, we just need to have a no tolerance policy, um, and try to enact policies that we can to, um, affect, just change. And, um, anyway, thank you so much, and I hope everyone's having a wonderful summer, thank you.
Okay, um, Counsel Harris?
I just wanna take this opportunity to thank the entire city, especially my council colleagues, um, for all of the support, condolences, and prayers that was extended to me over the past few weeks. Three, three weeks ago, my great-grandson was four years old drowned. And, um, it's something that I have never dealt with before in my life. But I did receive a lot of individuals in this city reaching out to me, and I really thank you guys for that.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Gore?
Um, yeah, so, well, let's just say it's also great to have you back on the DA's. We also celebrate you being here in person, so let's end on a happy note with that, to see you, um, in present, smiling, and it's great to see your presence amongst us and not virtually, so we can even miss my seatmates. So I'll definitely say, uh, in regards to what I've been working on, is we actually got the call with LGAC, for those who don't know, it's local government, um, couns- advisory council to executive council for the Chesapeake Bay. Oddly enough, we're talking about, um, stormwater projects, the, the orders that were just passed, those type of things we deal with. Um, right now, we're coming up on the Chesapeake Bay Agreement adoption, it expires in twenty-twenty-five, it's a federal document and agreement. So we're, um, participating in efforts to figure out what local government role will be in this new adoption at the federal level for Chesapeake Bay. Um, so regardless of that, um, additionally, I'm looking forward to trying to do some cool things regarding nationalized out and some other ideas for doing a community block party, um, and some efforts in regards to workforce developments, and then also community services, and helping Dr. Minker. That's all I have, uh, hope everybody's having a great summer, um, and enjoying themselves and staying cool.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Might have to give a shout-out to, to the police department.
Yeah.
Because in that incident that happened on Sunday, I just heard a lot of great comments, 'cause it could have been a disaster if people had reacted differently, and I'll like just tell Chief Taylor, whatever y'all are doing is, is working, where people can go in a crowd and come out peaceful with no one else harmed. So I really appreciate the efforts of those young officers that you're training, thank you so much.
Yeah, and then also extend, um, you know, a lot of, you know, kudos and thanks, um, to, you know, the Chesfield County Police Department and the Prince George Police that helped you guys out as well. Um, you know, like, you know, my colleague said, you know, it's a, it's a crying shame that you have a crowd of, you know, between a hundred and two hundred people and not one person, you know, saw something. Um, but, you know, how you guys managed it was, was very good. Um, you, my, my hats off to you guys. And again, you echo the same, uh, comments, if you do see something, please say something. Even if it's just suspicious, it might seem minor, um, you know, we just had, um, an incident reported where there was a suspicious vehicle, um, that was reported. Um, citizen, you know, said it's been parked there for three days, expired tags. Um, you know, police went out there, it wasn't there, they don't mind, they do not mind going out and checking on things. You are not a burden to them. It is better to say something than to keep quiet and something really bad happen. Um, so please, again, if you see something, say something, that's the only way that we're gonna continue to make this, uh, community safer.
Yes.
And then also, uh, you know, for citizens, um, that wanna be involved, please, you know, look at, you know, our list of vacancies for boards and commissions. Uh, we've been doing a good job over the last couple of months approving folks. Uh, we just approved three more, um, you know, new citizens that, you know, signing up for, um, your boards and commissions, and they wanna make a difference, uh, here in the community. So again, you know, please sign up for these, uh, boards and commissions. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?